I'm gonna bring the Dunbartons up. Almost said something. Dunbar's Board of Selectmen meeting in order. All three selectmen are present, town administrator is present. Leo Martell is doing the video recording for the benefit of the public. And Lyndon Nickerson's gonna upload it to the town website. Shortly Jeff Crowe, our road agent, will be in to discuss on-call stipend for plowing. Okay gentlemen, I have some old business here for the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion?
Lowering.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the eight fifty-two non-public meeting minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I'd also like to add that I'd like to seal those.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Leo, while we're signing these, I'm gonna open up your public comments, you have anything?
Later on.
No, this isn't the public.
Oh no.
No. This doesn't have the sticky on it, so.
No, it doesn't need to. Jeffrey needs to sign it though.
You want us to sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Missed the tab, I got it now. Little slow.
This is the regular meeting minutes.
Okay. Where do I get the worst my signature looks?
Non-public.
Don't you seal those up, we'll sign across it. Once we take them down.
Is it regular?
Just to keep it in a pile there somewhere. Okay. I'm gonna go on to item number two, I'll wait for Jeff to show up. Per RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five, dash B, Roman numeral three, B, to accept forty-five hundred from the sale of the Fire of Environment Command vehicle, the old one. And to put that money in the general fund. The motion's been made, any second?
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
More money than we uh.
Yeah, is this the one that we voted last time, or the meeting or two before, to put to public auction that they conquered?
That's right. Yep.
Okay.
Actually got five thousand, but they take their fee out of that.
Actually pretty good for that.
That's pretty good, that's a, that's a great house.
Is it?
It's that kind of wear on it.
Yeah.
It was starting to rupture, I mean too.
Did it, okay. No further discussion?
Okay. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um. Did you do the first public comment? I'm sorry if I.
I did, I did, while we were signing, and Leo said he's gonna hold till the end.
Okay.
So. Lee, I don't see in my packet here the. Um, oh, might be written in there, sorry. JSI auction is here.
Wait, can I sign the seal?
Here, go over here. I'll sign the seal as well. Let's see the other part of the pile, Dana. Donna Dunn has given us some wording in reference to the, um, item number three on here. Review the historical whereas recommended disclaimer wording for the Hadley Genealogy, um, collection. And. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review this wording. Uh, this was something we had done earlier. And looks like they made a couple of small type of changes here.
She, they did?
Well, it's dark and like you normally do, so that's why.
Oh, no, no, that, that was her whole template.
And we reviewed this letter before, so now we're basically signing it to make it current.
Cause what they'll do is they'll attach it, uh, to the current, um, list of information. They'll insert it at the end.
Okay. Do not assign that data. We'd already discussed that. Alright, Jeff Crowe has shown up here, so, um, we're gonna review the highway contract on call stipend for the hourly plowing rates. We have the previous one here in our agenda. Um, the six-wheel plow truck standard goes one-ten per hour and a one-ton should be paid seventy-five per hour. And the stipend. The contractor was a minimum of five hours per week, beginning on-call. The on-call stipend will be paid during the week when the contractor has called for winter maintenance that exceeds five hours of service. If the contractor's called for services and does not meet the minimum of five hours, then the town will compensate the contractor in the difference. Guarantee a minimum of five hours. The on-call, uh, stipends run Sunday to Sunday. The town cannot guarantee the dispersment of a stipend if the contractor does not submit invoice on a timely basis. An invoice must be filed with an accounting department by the following Monday of full week. The hourly rate of on-call shall be reviewed and determined by the Board of Selectmen on an annual basis. So that's what we're here for today. Jeffrey, do you have any suggestions for us?
Yeah, we're gonna bump the plow rate up for the large truck to one-twenty.
That's what you'd like to do?
Yes.
Okay. So Jeff, just recommendations for one-hundred-and-twenty per hour.
Which is a ten dollar an hour increase.
Yep. And how about your one-ton, what's your suggestion?
Five on that, up to eighty. This isn't quite as.
Is that an original from last year or something?
Um, yes, it was, it was, you wanna read it?
No, I'm just, I have a copy here, I'm just noticing the back actually has signatures on it.
Oh, I didn't know.
So you're making scratches on it?
Yeah, I just scratched on the original.
Um, no, I printed that, that one.
Oh, that is.
I have one in the book.
Oh, good.
Okay.
I didn't notice that on the back either.
Yeah.
Um. Jeff, do you still see it pretty cheap compared to the state rates? Are you sure you don't wanna go to eighty-five on your one-ton?
Uh, yeah, we can, we'll probably make it something.
I just thought if we went on ten on the other one, we should be ten on that one too.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, we can give it out to the board for thought, but.
What's the state rate?
The state rate, I think they're up close to, uh, ninety-five an hour for the one-tons.
Yes.
And I think they're at either one-forty or one-sixty for the.
The state plow rate's a little confusing. It's based on different types of equipment you have with the truck, like the size of the snowplow. Things like that. You know, we all have eleven-foot snowplows and a minimum ten-foot wing on trucks. And there's only two of us in effects, me and Nate Naris. Um, and the state also does a fuel differential thing. Which if fuel goes up so much, they get a stipend for that, but we're not getting into that, cause that's complicated.
If you live a liquid, uh, supplement, you can put down the highway, they give you five dollars more an hour, even if you never use it. There's a lot of small things you can do to your truck, even though they're never used.
None of our operators have that. A computerized system is another stipend. So there's a lot of graduations to it, so simply answer the question.
Okay, is this labor and machinery?
Yes, the operator and the machine.
Okay.
The driver, operator, what?
Yep.
And the piece of work.
So there's nothing for anywhere, town trucks, anything for the outside guys like we used to.
Basically.
Yep.
Sounds a little clumsy in here, but if you get five hours a week whether you go out plowing or not. If you go out and you exceed the five hours of the week, you get that pay. But you, you know what I mean? You're gonna get guaranteed five hours.
Five minimum, yeah.
Yeah, just because you're ready, you're on-call, you're available and all that. That mirrors what the state does. They do it for a twenty-week period.
Okay.
And I would suggest going from the week of November sixteenth through the week of March twenty-ninth, which is twenty weeks.
Yeah, it's in the third Sunday in November, is that the sixteenth?
I don't know if it's the sixteenth or whatever.
No, that couldn't be. Let me look at that now, just to make sure this works.
Couldn't be the first Sunday, would be the sixteenth.
Third.
Oh, third, third, yeah.
So Sundays would be the sixteenth?
Yep.
Geez, Jeff, you're right on it.
Hey, I don't. Yeah, whatever.
You're good, you're just good.
It's whatever.
Say it, Jeff.
Uh, the invoice thing. I submit my invoices every two weeks.
I would think that that should be every two weeks, cause nobody gets them in that.
Well, I hope quite often the guys, if they, they'll submit one every week.
If they really want the money.
Yeah.
They need, yeah, they do.
So we should put two weeks. We don't have, we don't have a problem with most of the subcontractors submitting the bills in a timely manner. I've had a couple guys that drag their feet a little bit, but most of them wanna get their money.
The ones that need it.
The ones, yeah, the ones that need it.
I'm gonna be in that suit very quick.
The ones that need it. And so that, at this present time, the only people that affects are myself, Nate Naris, and John Wiggan.
Do you wanna, uh, make that every two weeks, just so that it's not like? You know, like you said, you do yours every two weeks.
Yeah, and they typically, John, he hits a miss sometimes two weeks, sometimes.
I would say that we should adjust that to two weeks instead of one a week.
I, I don't think that Nate will like that.
No, no.
You can do it still a week.
You can still do it every week, it just doesn't penalize you if you're not.
Right.
Okay, so you need wording to say.
I don't think it really makes any difference.
It doesn't really matter, right? It just says kinda guarantee the dispersment if the invoice isn't submitted. So if you don't submit it, you don't get the dispersment.
That, but you get it when you submit it.
Right.
Yeah. It sounds like this, if you don't submit it in a week, you're not gonna get one. But that's.
That's why I was, that's why I was reading it like that.
That's, that's what any bill.
Oh, so I would, okay, so maybe change that, the town cannot guarantee the timely dispersment of a stipend.
Oh, I don't even know why we got that in there. I think it's foolish. Just like any ability.
Second to the bottom.
So it wasn't you days.
How would you strike it out?
Yeah.
Just say, uh, invoices will be, uh, submitted to, uh, the octopus.
We don't have a bunch of.
Strike the first sentence out, but leave the second one, an invoice must be filed with the accounting department by the following Monday of a full week.
But in his case, he wants to do it every two weeks.
Every other.
It's stupid, don't do it. It's, it's just complicated.
Hold the sentence right out, hold the paragraph.
Hold a little paragraph out.
We only got, we only have two guys, well, three guys that are doing it this week and keep track of it.
Take the whole paragraph out?
Strike it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll strike that paragraph.
So the road agent has requested for the six-wheel plow standard trucks. Six-wheel.
Six-wheel truck with a plow, wing and standard.
At a hundred and twenty dollars per hour and a one-hundred-and-eighty-five per hour.
Yes.
Does the board have a, make, uh, make a motion to adjust our rates for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six to that rate?
I second that.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion?
None.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that'll be twenty-five and twenty-six rates, is that okay?
Yes.
That's the rest of this year and first half next year.
Correct. Been flipping a little bit in the pile there. That should, uh, Lynn can make those changes.
Yeah.
I got, I got another question, is snow plowing related?
Oh, okay.
It kinda fall, dovetails out there, it's a little different. We have been, uh, giving Peter Camarsha one single town employee, uh, on-call stipend for being available basically twenty-four-seven through the winter period for plowing and stuff, and I think right now it's like a thousand dollars.
That's correct.
A thousand dollars a year, paid, I believe. I don't know when it's paid, if it's the first year, the end of the plow season, I don't know. But I'd like to bump that up a little bit, cause it's been quite a few years these, we've been at that.
I think since we established.
It is, yeah.
Twelve hundred?
Yeah, anyway. I don't know, I was thinking maybe bumping it up to like fifteen, or is that too aggressive?
What was the difference, twelve fifty?
Fine. Deal.
So. Yeah, that's, that's pretty good, that's a twenty-five percent increase.
I'm at twelve, he's at fifteen, you're splitting the difference between them.
No, no.
No, no, he's talking about nice and.
I know.
And if, if we do eventually get another employee, we would do that.
What are we doing at the, the police side, cause way in the heck up there now. We originally, Dana, we were giving these stipends for the police department, and his guy's on-call the entire winter. You know, and we're like, why are we not giving, this is one full-time stipend. This guy has to be up, has to answer his phone or his pager, and cannot go anywhere, cannot drink anything.
Well, he has to plan for the storm.
Almost all went along, I mean, if you ever plowed, you can't, it's very hard to sleep when you know that that storm's gonna start at two tonight, and you're, you have to figure out you're gonna be on the road.
It's a thing we initiated several years ago.
I, I, I'd be okay with fifteen hundred.
You would?
I'd be okay with fifteen hundred.
I do the on-call as well.
Yeah, cause it's been quite a few years since we bumped it up.
We've never bumped it up.
I don't think we never.
No, we haven't. We never, the first year we initiated, we kinda ticked that number.
Correct.
So that'll go in his budget, probably.
Yeah.
We've had plenty of money in there.
So if there was another employee that, where they split off the on-call?
Now, you're both on-call at that point.
Would it be?
For winter plowing, yes.
Double the budget.
We all. Ninety-nine and ninetens percent of the time, we all go out. Occasionally, if we have a, an evening with some like slippery spots or something, I may go out with the towns, one ton myself, and cruise around the roads and hit them, but that's on a rare occasion.
Okay.
It's just, you know, if we've had some weird weather and it's like I take a ride out around, and if I deem that it's necessary to call the whole crew in, I call everybody in. We don't usually just one of us go out and go out.
Cause you wouldn't have, yes, okay.
Like.
So extra person would be.
It wouldn't be like, it's Joe's turn this week, it's Pete's turn next week.
Okay.
We don't do that, and be on-call for the whole period of time.
Yeah, okay, so other positions obviously would switch off and on.
No, I know what you would call, okay. That's why.
I understood.
Yeah. We go as.
And it is a pretty big hassle, because you gotta be available, and supposedly you can't like take off those ski.
Yeah, that's right.
It's kind of, the weekend can't do it.
It's kind of a, it's basically a reward for their commitment.
Can't go snowboarding and.
It's a reward for their commitment without upping their pay.
Right.
And we're fortunate, we have a guy that doesn't mind hanging around doing it.
Yeah. No, we are, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
So let's make a motion then.
I make a motion that we raise the stipend for on-call plowing to one-thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's the town employee.
Correct.
Just, you know, it's just that kind of boy, not anybody.
Yes, the other side.
The other ones are getting, yeah. Yep.
Yeah. And that, that's, Dana, it's only when it starts snowing, they don't get anything really from us, cause they're working a minimum of five hours. Very few storms in Oklahoma, they work five hours.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So pretty much when it starts snowing, this kinda goes away. What happened is, we used to have fifteen or twenty storms a winter. Well, those things are drying up, even down here in southern Hampshire. We're down to maybe nine or ten storms, maybe twelve storms they go out for. So they get this truck with a wing and a plow all set up. They're not using it to do any other hauling, they're, it's pretty much they're ready for the town, so we're kinda giving them that, because the plowing's not what it used to be around here. There used to be a lot more plow.
And it's, you know, like everything else, expenses have gone up, you know, insurance.
Maintaining that.
And, uh, yes, occasionally we do get several weeks in the winter, but you never know how it's gonna be, as you know with the weather. But like Dave did say, if I call them in, well, I mean, it's never less than five hours. So it, you know, it's just, they don't get called, they're guaranteed they're gonna get a five-hour stipend. Which again mirrors the state. This was something we enacted, like I said, several years ago, that too.
Yeah, in fact, the state's gone up since, uh.
Yeah, to try to.
Went on that now too.
To try to enhance people coming in and out.
And stay with us too, cause it's a shortage of drivers.
Just as a, as a swag over a twenty-week period, how many, how many weeks would have zero call-outs?
Um, I bet we've had maybe four, maybe five maximum. I, I could look in my notes and see what we had last year, but somewhere, somewhere in that vicinity, it's very seldom, it's kinda.
Normally at the start of the season, so.
Yeah, a lot of times.
At the end.
A lot of times we'll get a couple weeks in the beginning of the season, because if the weather hasn't settled, set into rain, it's warm enough so it doesn't freeze, but then when it changes. And then sometimes you get a dry spell in the middle of the winter.
Sure.
And then we seem to get, winter comes back at us in March.
Depends, depends if we have an election, elections are really important.
Yeah, that's usually when we get a salsa.
Just to give the, the guys in the room here another feel for it. A state guy, like I have nephew that plows for state, he starts at Sully's and goes down, plows to this corner. The state calls you way in advance. He's one of the only ones that leaves from his house, cause it's halfway on this road or wherever, actually down that end. But they give him quite a bit more than a town does, and their stipend just went out. And then they give you the extras for the different sized trucks and all those features. But they're basically going back and forth on a straight road, a state road typically. When you're in our roads, you're up and down and through the.
Country road.
Forest, the country woods, it's a lot different.
But anyway, it's, just these are little caveats that we've enacted in the last few years to try to make it, and everybody's happy with it.
Any luck with your second driver? Second driver?
We haven't hired that.
That's what I'm saying, nope.
Yeah, we haven't had any.
Okay.
Not since, not since the guy you wanted to interview.
Right.
I just had an email this morning. I'm, I'm missing his name now from, um, over off of Twist Hill Road on Harmon's Way, the guy that does the fuel for the town.
Oh, um.
Anyway, I'm forgetting, but he sent out an email, he has a, like a son-in-law moving to town or something.
The guy that does the fuel for the town?
Yeah.
There's a little co-op.
Oh, oh, yeah, I.
Of the fuel.
A propane guy.
Yes.
Yeah, for like a dollar ninety-nine, they get my propane, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
He has a son-in-law moving, uh, to Dunbar.
Yeah.
With a CDL.
Oh.
And so I put him out to, uh, call you at the town offices, so if you get a call and you're wondering where it came from.
He doesn't have a job?
Doesn't have a job, just moved to Dunbar, so, with a CDL.
Without a job.
No, he doesn't, they said, they were reaching out to see if anybody knew of any jobs, and they said the guy has a CDL, so I was thinking, lightbulb.
Yep.
Get on him, Jeff.
Yeah, well, this could have so far, they experienced.
Yeah, so.
But whatever, yeah, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
That's it.
You had me with the, the guy with the fuel with the town, I couldn't, I would have never.
I still can't think of his name, it's gonna come to me. Jim Babala.
Jim, Jim Babala.
That's who it is. So anyway, I forwarded him an email, asked him to call the town office.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm assuming they can find that. Alright, so that's all I have, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, the painting crew has arrived at the highway garage, and they've pressure washed and done some level of scraping.
Okay.
I don't know exactly where they're at.
We're gonna discuss that a little bit later tonight, the crew is over at the highway department, a different crew.
Oh.
Doing his building, they have pressure washed.
Yeah.
From what I saw today, they did no light scraping at all.
Yeah, I don't know where these guys are at, I have not talked to them.
Okay, I'm gonna go see them sometime tomorrow, cause I was gonna go on my way today, but got sidetracked.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
What we're doing, Jeff, is they're almost identical pricing, so we're judging the companies to see which one we want to help us out in the future.
Yeah, like I said, I, I haven't talked to these people, but they have showed up and they have done some amount of, beat, seen them, talked to them a couple times.
Oh, that's good.
But I, I don't know where exactly they are in the process.
Yeah. Um, these guys are coming back on Sunday, cause they were gonna try and paint the front the other day, Woody was opening for business, so they're coming back on Sunday, so.
I would imagine if it rained, it'll be a little wet to do any painting tomorrow, so.
Yeah, that's why they're.
I, I don't, like I said, I don't know what this, these guys' game plan is, I haven't talked to anybody personally.
Yeah, you're right, so I probably don't swing.
So I don't know, I don't know what they're up to. Um, I was noticing the, the price, I think we paid just about the same amount back in two thousand eighteen when we had to paint.
Wow.
By, uh, reliable paint.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure it was pretty close to the same, I don't remember.
These guys, um, have bid for the town before, um, and they were reasonably priced. And so we called these companies to see, cause obviously we didn't try them on this building here, cause we didn't wanna take a change of them. But those two outbuildings, I think they're something that we can see.
I got my third bid today, and it's almost double these two.
Oh, good.
This is, I believe we have Hill Brothers.
Yeah, the other one's Cern Pro.
Oh, okay.
So.
Just so I give you the report on that, they've started.
I noticed, um, um, we don't have to get into it now, but these guys are putting two coats on almost immediately with no primer. Cause most of the building has paint on it over here. I believe these guys are doing one coat, but they're priming everything. So it's a little different process, but I think it's gonna be the same end result. So. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, no problem.
That's all I got. Okay.
You got anything for me?
You're welcome to say, oh, why don't you give an update on, uh, Kelsey Road, do you have some more?
Kelsey Road, where is that?
You know where that is.
Oh, well, we went in and removed trees this week, removed the stumps. So we're moving a lot in an area where we're gonna, um, bring in a large jackhammer into, hammer out the ledge, which we'll probably be doing in about, uh, after the, after. What's the holiday coming up?
Turkey?
And no, no.
Veterans?
Veterans Day. Pete's taking next week off, he's got some more time to use up, so he's gonna take all of next week off. And Monday, I think he's taking off two, and then Tuesday's a holiday, and then he'll be back and then we're scheduling to go down there and break up the rid, walk, rock, and move it out. So far, it's come along quite well.
Looks good. We had a couple more trees right close to the driveway that were, uh, sprayed, is he coming back, or?
Yes, that, we kinda broke it, phases basically what we could do in a day.
Oh, okay.
And by the ledge, where we gotta do future work, I wanted to do that first, and then we're gonna set up on a, a later date and work our way down the road.
Yeah, cause there's no ledge there.
No, there isn't.
Okay.
And, uh, break it up into sections a little bit, it'll be more manageable. And we were, traffic was excellent, everybody at work was on the road, were very appreciative, very little traffic in and out, no problems whatsoever.
Yeah, they were nice enough to give heads up.
Yeah, dawned an email, had everybody's email address, gave them an email, and it worked out quite well.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, no complications whatsoever.
With all the challenges we've had in the past, it's good to have, it's good news.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, Jeff, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Let's see what you're doing.
Okay, we have a, uh, a transfer station fence repair here, that I had discussed in a previous meeting, I thought it was forty-four hundred, it's forty-two seventy for the damage, um, sections of fence, is to replace three-inch and eighth-inch rails. Damage from material being thrown over the fence. Replace three-foot tall by a hundred ninety-four inch black roller gate, one of the roller gates, that's the one that Woody damaged. And replace one damaged roller, and remove the post, which has already been done, for the wall to be fixed. They came back this week, uh the demo company and form company, and removed the forms off the concrete repair is done.
Do we have a claim pending still?
We're gonna open one up.
Yeah.
I've asked Woody to take pictures of these dented rails.
Okay.
And so we're gonna put a claim in with all of it. So uh this proposal that we need to approve. Um, is in the amount of forty-two seventy from GN Fents. I'll make a motion that we approve this uh. As he's already done part of the work.
Twenty seconds.
Motion made, second in, all in favor?
Just discussion, um, so we would make a claim with a potential for uh recouping everything by a thousand dollars?
Yes.
From us.
I think I can include the concrete work with that claim.
Yeah, we'll try, we'll just have crack, crack concrete along with it.
Yep.
And uh.
That's just my clarification.
Which I think about twenty-five hundred.
Okay, oh, it would be twenty-five in addition to this?
Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion?
Okay, being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um. We have a budget proposal. Um. From the building and planning department. And I don't see that in my agenda file. Oh, it's that one way down here. Okay, thank you guys. So this was Donna's budget, right, Lane?
Correct, Donna's done this a couple of years now, um, the system seems to work well, I uh generate a budget. And then I break it down into departments on different tabs, and then I export that information out to the department heads. It's an Excel worksheet, so it's easy for them to fill, populates to the bottom, and um there's no guessing in between. Uh, any of the notes would be uh listed. If there were questions on the different lines, so.
So the reason the inspector is down this year is cause he was out for a blueberry dive? He's only at, oh, well, we haven't finished the whole year out.
No, we have not.
Okay. And um. It's Cass Inspector, Inspector's assistant.
So what's the uh, the um.
Column three, or row three is.
Is the budget for twenty-twenty-five, so that's going from sixty-six, seven twenty-five to sixty-four, one sixty-eight, is that because of her retirement in?
She had overlapping coverage for twenty hours a week for two months, plus her, so that was the sixty-six, seven twenty-five.
So it's pretty much a flat budget?
Yeah.
I thought that the uh, the building environment should be down, but the actual twenty-twenty-five is unfinished yet, so. It's hard to know how that will all come out.
Right, and his is based on fifty-two weeks of, of a stipend plus his mileage, so there isn't any wiggle room there, I think Jermaine bumped it up. A couple of, as you can see in the note, assistant inspector, she did not include that in last year, so when he happened to be out for shoulder, shoulder surgery. We had to send John out for a few inspections, um, even though he was responding to emails, reviewing permits and review, reviewing plans. Somebody physically had to go out to um home sites to inspect, so she included an additional two thousand for the assistant in that particular one.
Oh, so that's why that's up twenty-seven hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Two, two thousand of it is that backup?
Correct.
Assistant, okay.
Yep, and we may not use it, but it has to be there.
Okay.
Elaine, we have um twenty-four, two twenty-eight. As it's about divided by fifty-two weeks, I thought it was an even twenty-five thousand when we made that.
What, what are we talking about, Inspector?
Yeah.
He has a um, the wage of four sixty-five, ninety-three.
I know, but I thought we were doing the math of twenty-five thousand worked into fifty-two weeks when we originally hired him.
No.
We had an odd number, like twenty-four, two twenty-eight, I don't think so.
It's because he's now in step two of the step wage, he's gotten a two and a half percent.
Cost of living rate is too.
And uh cola is on the last part.
So it must have been down at twenty or something when we first started?
I think originally he was at four fifty or something like that, for a weekly stipend, plus the twenty-five dollars uh for fuel.
Okay. That would done, that would make it understandable why it's a different amount. I know it was an even amount when we did that.
Yeah, well, I just can't remember.
No, but the things where you give three percent here, three percent there.
Whether it was twenty-two thousand or twenty-three thousand, I remember. Okay.
I think it was twenty-three now that you say that, but it was a work, because it was at the set at the four fifty rate at the time.
Right, I hadn't thought about the stipend amounts, that makes sense. Okay, what's the uh?
The other group of accounts would be the planning and zoning, um, she had originally uh presented uh what you, the numbers you see here, but she had. Lined out, or struck out the secretary zoning, thinking that the, without a zero dollar amount in that line, you can't fund it or pay. Any person to work that area, so that's her note, zoning secretary title, only covered by secretary building inspector, eliminate line question. I removed the strike and put a dollar, only because I feel like if you put a dollar in a uh place, as a placeholder, you can. Fund it if you need to have either Central New Hampshire Regional Planning doing some um consulting work. I know they have planning consulting, but I was more or less thinking about transcribing the minutes, or getting the notices out to uh in the mail and that type of thing. So leaving a dollar there um gives it a, a placeholder.
Essentially flat then, then? Yeah, I'm fine with it as well. Check mark on that.
So um, she talks about that large format printer that she has in there, is there any special um IT support or maintenance on that printer?
Uh, she has that under the supplies in this budget building, is all your, and other group. This one here is um. Which one, which line are you looking at?
Um, ju- no, I'm asking if it's in there.
It's in the building department under her supplies.
Under supplies?
Yes.
Okay, so I did see, I did see supplies, planning and zoning also here.
That is strictly for like, oh, we buy the um. The manuals every year, and it runs about two hundred dollars to disperse to all the members.
Oh.
That book that you've gotten.
Okay.
The land use book.
Okay, yeah.
That's where that comes from.
Okay.
And theoretically, you could run a department with one account and include everything, but it makes, this is more transparent and.
Greenie Larry.
And then allows you to, you know, figure out what you need to include going forward.
So she put, she's putting the large format printer support under, under the building department, not under planning and zoning?
Uh, which account are you looking at, on the planning and zoning?
You just told me that, you just said.
It's under fees, yes, that's just for service and or copies or paper of the line copier.
I know what you mean.
You know what I'm asking? Yeah, okay.
So I think what she answered the first time is it's under supplies slash BI, whatever BI is.
Yes.
Is that three thousand dollars she actually spent sixteen, sixty-two maintaining that printer as well?
That covers that printer?
Yes, yes.
So ink and pens and all that, the big, the big pen, yeah, okay.
Paper, repair, jams, yes. So in the planning department, there is fees and services, but that is for um. Our, one of her dues that she has is per capita with Central New Hampshire, that's what that is, it comes out of that line.
Okay.
And then mapping is the updates, annual mapping that we do with the subdivision, and adjustments on the maps, and then um. Planning consultant, she keeps that line there as she has in the past to have um some support with. Updating all the regulations that may need to be reviewed on an annual basis.
Yeah, okay. My question's answered. Only cause I knew there was that special printer in there.
Yes.
Okay, that can go in our package, so we're gonna start keeping these data, and as the departments come in, we'll have a folder. Leaning on my kids' mind in my mailbox, and then we can refer back to them.
And then we collectively look at all of them at the end?
Yes.
Well, I'll put it into one report, but you can refer back if you make notes on any of these.
But if you wanted to cut a department down, you can make a mental note on here, and later when we look at it for the final, you can say.
Okay.
I made a physical note back when we came for original meeting, and this is my thoughts.
I, I guess with, when the, when the budgets are presented, that's our time to really. Deep, deep dive into it, ask the questions, and then in our minds.
Cutting it is after.
You're right, and then approving it, approving it is uh cutting it, as Dave said, cutting it is afterwards, and then we have a altogether as an aggregate.
And sometimes, cause uh when all the departments come together, one department you might find a beat of that year, and other departments you might say, well, we wanna tighten up on that department, cause this one has such a neat. Like for Jess truck, or like for the fire truck, or ambulance, or something like that.
Well, there's also, I mean, just having the actuals in here too, um, there could be an update for actuals as we get closer to the end of the year to know, like, hey.
That's exactly.
We didn't spend, like, under planning consultant, there's only six ninety-eight spent year to date, uh, to the four thousand budget, right?
That's correct.
So there could be an opportunity.
So I will be updating that.
Yeah, you say an opportunity to maybe cut a thousand dollars.
Sure.
Exactly, that's how, that's exactly what we'll probably be doing.
Right.
So, and then again, we'll watch that as we get through it too, cause it will be just like Clairemont, you know, five billion dollar. Uh, they cut their budget too tight, is what happened, then they had expenses run over, and that's how they, for that school. Okay, so that's a good review to start with. Um, we have, in our packet, the town hall. Uh, reservation form.
So Dave, um, the last time we uh looked at this was about a year ago, um, Justin was still on the committee. Or on the board, and um we thought it was too soon to review the policy to uh decide whether we would expand. The use to these other um residents that have more personal requests. It does have a fair amount of uh use, they are typically um involved.
Uh.
Town, but not necessarily, it may be school related, it may be, um, but is, it, uh. My understanding is as long as it's a resident that's involved with the organization, like the Boy Scouts or Girl.
Town, town organizations. But no organizations from other towns?
We have the Bo um hockey team that has Dunbarton residents and students.
That's right, so anything to benefit Dunbar.
That's right, right, and, and so that's what, but we had said, we would let it go through a little longer and take a look at it. Now I have this request for a very vague um.
Well, it looks like it's a ladies' luncheon. At thirty dollars per person. From noon to four, I don't see any benefit to the town on this.
That's why I bring it before the board, because at the time of the day, uh there are typically no events.
Would there be beverage involved, yes, audio, no, town hall equipment required, yes, if available, would like to serve champagne?
That's the first of alcohol beverages too.
No, we did allow um the garden club to do a wine toast or something, I can't.
And that's just as champagne toast.
So my, my look at the, the shoes here doesn't say anything about. Um, a ladies' luncheon for anything from the town to Dunbar, like if it was a ladies' luncheon for um. I don't know, I wanna say Dunbarton town ladies golfers or something, it would be something, but this is just a regular ladies' luncheon.
Or Dunbar seniors or something.
Yeah, something to be.
Where's the organization coming from?
I haven't gotten that.
Just a resident in town.
Okay.
Yeah.
So uh my, my thought on this one, just for my own personal thing, is no. Um, because it's not benefiting the town of Dunbar nor its residents.
You, as you are aware, you're not seeing a lot of these anymore, because they're the ones that we have already discussed in the past, and that's what we're following. This is um slightly different.
What you say is like, once they make a, a request, and we approve their request, they don't have to come before the board and review it again. You know, as once we say it's okay to use the, the facility, they can continue to.
We manage it, yeah.
Manage it.
Yeah.
But you're also saying that you know the things that aren't allowed, and you're not even allowing to submit a request.
That's right.
If it's not, if you know it's not allowed.
Um, this one came when I wasn't in the office, so that's why.
Yeah, isn't that what you just said, we're not seeing a lot of them because you're rejecting them?
No, 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 they're already acceptable under their policy. Everything that's being reserved for the upstairs.
You're not rejecting?
We're not rejecting, they're all, all into like right here.
So there, there was one for birthday party.
Yeah.
For an elderly person in town, and because we hadn't gone down that road with like first birthdays or any of that yet.
Baby showers or.
They okayed at the town office, but they came in front of us, and we did deny it, Dana, only because. We said that, you know, we wanted to look at the use that building had over a year, year and a half, see how all of the Dunbar, cause there's quite a few. Different things that use entities in Dunbar. If you look at the garden club and the.
And now the fire department's doing something there.
Boys' clubs, and girls' clubs, and. Uh, all the stuff that Mary does there, so we haven't opened up to like birthday parties, especially if somebody wants to get. A charge in here that doesn't include anything from the town. Like if somebody's gonna have like movie night up there, and they're doing a collection on the movie night, some part of that's coming back at Dunbar, whether it's. Going to the PTO or whatever, okay, so that's kinda where we've set a limit to it. Cause the birthday party, we're gonna be here with an elderly person for a long time residence, so to say no was a hard thing to do.
Yeah, but there are eight birthdays every day in Dunbar.
Yeah, how would you know that?
I didn't know that.
It is a fact.
Did you AI it up?
No, it's thirty-one hundred residents.
Oh, okay.
With thirty-sixty-five days.
Well, some days it could be ten.
I just, uh, it's an average, you're right.
Dana, you don't have all my kids on there. Obvious. So um I need somebody else to say no also on this, I guess it's for.
I, I actually think it's a no the way it's written, because it, it doesn't clarify who it's for, if she's the only Dunbarton resident, and then there's. Fifty-nine non-Dunbarton.
And it just says a ladies' luncheon.
Right. So I think, I think.
You know, for the ladies' luncheon for the um garden club, I'd say absolutely, you know, but it's not.
That's right, as written, as written, it can't be accepted, I think, is the way it should be.
But I wasn't sure if this was the time for you to review the use and expand on it, and if you feel that at this time.
I, I think I'm so comfortable with the current use.
I'm comfortable with the use as well, I think.
I, I haven't seen the current use, but.
Yeah, you should look at, um.
The policy is attached.
Dana, I was on, I was on the um town hall.
You want to say it?
Yeah. After, after Bob resigned from being a selectman, I became the town hall. We use on, on the rebuilding on the second floor, and that group of people looked at this policy.
Yeah.
Along with Mary, and came up with uh a policy that the select board could look at, and they were in agreement with this when it started out.
So they're the ones.
So a bunch of other people looked at it, and we looked at it as selectmen, and we tightened up on it a little bit. Um, and then this was the policy we signed in place, and we wanted to really see how that was being used.
Right.
Cause a lot of people wanted to have, um, you know, if you start like first birthdays, I don't know if you've been to a first birthday lately, but they're not like when we were kids. First birthday parties have seventy-five, eighty, ninety people at them now.
Yep.
Can I, can I bring up another scenario that just came, was brought to my attention through community Facebook? Um, cause it, it created a double booking over there, but someone without applying, without um talking to anyone in the office. Just arbitrarily posted it on community Facebook that they're going to have a veterans. Um. It was that um.
Veterans Day celebration or?
No, it's just, it's not the veterans themselves, it was for Marines. The two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the establishing a Marine position, and they just threw it out there saying, we're gonna have a meeting here at the town office. Town hall, second floor, how many of the Marines are there out there, please reach out to us, and so it brought to my attention, they had phone numbers, so I called them. And said, hey, this is, this needs to be filled out, you need to make sure that um, that the spot is available. Whereas that is more in line with. Residents who live in town, who are looking to. Get together as an organization, Marines, I think is more in line of town use than something like this.
Well, as long as it was Marines from within town, I guess, you know.
Yeah.
You open up to all of them, there's gonna be a lot of people there, you know, but. So we wanted to make sure that town people could use it first and foremost.
Yeah.
You know, we don't want birthday parties from people outside of town, since like, like I'm telling you, you can go to the town hall and wear the old town hall.
Yes.
Just as a resident, not from where, and you can rent that town hall for like fifty-four dollars.
Yep, yep.
As long as you leave it clean.
Hope they're saying that she did the same thing.
It's a, and it's a nice space to have a meet, but.
For baby shower, yeah.
Um, I don't think we were ready for that up here yet, because. We have nobody scheduled to clean that upstairs regularly, we do it a couple times a year to get it kind of dusted, sand, and there's no kitchen.
And there's no kitchen. Yeah.
It's just, uh, we'd have a lot more expenses if we opened it up to that. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, there's no real ki- kitchen facilities out there, and a lot of these things. Need some sort, at least running water and a sink and all that.
I mean, even their outlets, they're honest with the earth.
What do you do then? And then.
Crazy, there's a couple outlets only up there.
The other thing I was thinking, you said you approve a group to do something, a lot of times those tend to morph into something else.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they, they might say, oh yeah, we gotta pull them to do it, the next thing you know, it's a.
You know, a few of those are one thing, when you wanna do a celebration of life for a long time residence, but a birthday party's another thing, to me, it's a whole different.
Everybody gets one every year, so with that. It only died once.
Hopefully.
So I, if you wanted to buy that up, how many deaths do we have, three? So anyway.
I don't have that number.
So we'll stay with the same current policy, and I'll let her know that it's not available for you. We did say we'd revisit it, so.
Well, per the way it's requested, it's also.
And, and Dana, they do, uh, when they were doing fundraises for that, they did a lot of open mics up there and stuff. And like I told, at that time, they were passing around a, you know, a thing for donations for the second floor on there, and I told them, as, as long as they, if they can have an open mic up there, if it's for the Dunbarton residents primarily. And any donations, a portion of that goes back to some form in the town, whether it's to the PTO or for the. Any, anything.
Right, we didn't wanna become a, a profit-making operation on a nickel. That's.
Right, right. It'll be interesting, um, just for thought, if someone says, I'll give you two thousand dollars to rent it for my kid's birthday party. How, would that impact our?
Well, a thousand free travels, if only a thousand for the town.
You know, would that impact the decision on this?
I, I like to think of that.
Because it benefits the town, potentially, right, financially, anyway, I'm just throwing that out for, for thought.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
Um, but I, I just read that.
Wait, by by that.
Um but I I just read that, it seems like a decent policy.
Right.
Yeah.
We spent a lot of time on that, but the thing is that, once we start going down that path, it's a slippery slope. Well, I can't afford to pay that much, I can I pay less than that?
Well, I know that what typically what we do with these organizations is if we get complaints that the the place was left messy. Then we reach out to the individual, we have someone that's local that's.
But you'll notice that somebody has to sign for it on Dunbar.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're responsible to leave that clean, if not, we can reach back out to them. But sometimes, to be quite honest, we can't check it after every event and go up there.
And and we actually debated whether we should have a security deposit, whether there's a cleaning fee, we went back and forth and. Because we, there's so few services in town, we wanted to give something back to the residents that they could use.
Not just that the residents' tax dollars actually paid for that, whether it was from excess funds or funds we could have put back to the.
Exactly, no, exactly, it's it's a.
And we felt like we were charging them for something they just paid for in their taxes, it was. We went back and forth on that for a long time.
Okay.
Finally got Mike to agree with me.
Who said I can't chat?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, holiday gift cards. I would like to um say that we do the same. Uh what'd you do, twenty five last year for Christmas and about twenty five for Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
You guys wanna leave it at twenty five or go to thirty? Any any ideas here? I know it costs a lot in stores for stuff.
For whom?
All our full-time employees.
All.
And part-time.
Full and part-time employees.
Full and part-time.
Last year, you did not do elected.
But the selectmen are exempt.
No, elected officials are not participating.
Well, that's Jeff.
I get it.
No turkey.
No turkey.
Um sometimes we include Jeff, but then we'd have to include the town.
Tax collector and town clerk. But you, last year, did you just pick the four regular um elected officials, whereas you had other um temporary casual?
There were no casual workers like one time a year that we allowed, I know that.
Right, yeah.
You know, like if you're part-time and your only kid.
You'd be regular full-time, a regular part-time.
Yes, regular part-time.
Right.
Who who are the four regular elected, you said?
Town clerk.
Road agent.
Tax collector, road agent.
Yeah, there's a fourth one. Is it the wealth bank director?
I mean.
Oh, uh.
Plus the selectmen?
The treasurer, no.
No.
The selectmen didn't get any.
No, I know that, you're you're listening to the exceptions.
Yes, we are.
The selectmen are an exception.
Yes.
Road agent, town clerk, town.
They've gone back and forth, one year there was no elected officials, other year there was the four, you named four, I can get the list, I didn't think for the list. But there was the.
Okay, because I'm just curious now.
I can, do you want me to?
Yeah.
What's that?
I asked her to get it because I'm curious now, because I can't think of the.
Yeah, last year was the uh.
Oh, so the last elected one.
Coming down the line here.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Me?
You're here enough, Leo, we like your.
We should get Leo, since he's here.
Half a turkey.
I can't eat that much.
You just, yes, you know. You did this one, but you didn't do that one. You did me, you didn't do that one. Well, really, the only people we could typically have is much more.
Yeah, so we don't vote ourselves on a gift card.
We don't vote ourselves a raiser or a turkey.
It's not, it's not worth, it's not worth voting a gift card for.
On my way out of here, I'm gonna vote you guys turkeys.
There's already enough complaints.
Yeah.
There's not anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
You seen a lot out there, Leo?
Oh yeah.
Well, today, there's a, Facebook, there's a lot of complaints today on Facebook.
About what?
About.
Everybody.
If, how the the but the tax rate went out, okay, everyone's getting their tax bills. And some of the complaints were part-time police officers, part-time town clerk, um road agent.
Part-time, I already did.
Part-time.
There were four last, there was no elected officials, this year it was these four. And you did get it.
I got it.
Oh.
How he forgets so easily.
He gave it out to somebody else.
I gave it to my wife. Tax collector, treasurer.
Didn't have to buy a present.
Oh, that's the other one, treasurer, town clerk, road agent.
Yeah.
So treasurer is the one we couldn't think of.
Oh, man. I think that that's fine.
No, I think uh, I think, I think uh it's not fine, I think if you're gonna have a policy, you keep it consistent. So you discriminate against some elected officials and not the others, either no elected officials or all elected officials.
Well, the only ones are us, so.
Well, we just had, we just highlighted him.
Right.
The road agent.
One last year. In the town.
I know that, so that's an exception to the exception. Which I agree with Mike that we probably shouldn't have exceptions to the exception.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I'd say we do all elected officials.
All elected officials, sure, are exempt from the gift card.
No.
I'll buy it.
No, that's not.
Okay, can I just ask what's going, I mean, I have elected trustee of trust funds, I have elected.
Yeah.
Supervisor check list, I have elected.
Are they all?
They don't get a salary of any kind, but it's paid, I think that was the key, paid elected positions.
Oh, boy, this gets more complicated.
Yes, it is.
That's why you make it, keep it real simple and just say regular paid employees and part-time employees, that's it.
Okay.
Keep it simple.
Without the exception of elected?
No elected officials, that's it, no one gets anything.
Okay, so that's gotta be stated though.
Right.
Because elected officials are paid.
No, oh, no, but.
It's employees, he says.
It's employees, now it was, we have a, elected official's not an employee.
Full-time and part-time employees.
Our regular full-time and part-time employees.
They're not considered employees?
Um the elected officials, no.
Really?
They're actually removed from our quarterly wage reporting too.
Really? Okay, so that's news to me, I didn't, I didn't know that they were classified differently.
Yeah. Yes, they are.
Well, I know the town clerk consider hours, but Jeff answers for his hours.
He's still an elected official, we don't report when I have to file.
Yeah, so he's not considered an employee?
Nope. He get, he's paid, no, 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 no.
I've heard both sides of that.
You made fucking all that on him?
When I have to report, when I have to report the quarterly wage.
It's overly complicated here.
Uh, minimum security.
No, but it's actually bringing up an interesting discussion.
The system.
So wait a second, do we pay Fike and all that on him?
Yes.
We do, but we don't, they're not considered employees according to the nature of.
If you're not an employee, you'd give him one check and he'd take his own stuff out.
But, all right, what we could do, what we could do is just leave this, elected officials shall not get a gift card. Everyone, all others will.
Well, Leo, what did you have?
Okay, so you guys are elected officials, but you're not getting any benefits.
That's correct.
He's not getting any town benefits either.
That's correct.
That's kind of like part of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Elected officials, you're not getting el- town benefits, you're not getting insurance, you're not getting pension plan, things like that.
Except the town clerk, uh town clerk.
Right.
Right, right, because that was done under a different situation.
How about the tax collector, that's?
No.
No.
That's part-time.
Treasurer is part-time.
Okay.
And they run for the position and then not.
So I see, that's where I see the difference.
They're needed to come out of our reporting for the employment security.
So I'll make a motion that we give gift cards for both the Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas holiday of thirty dollars. Uh for each holiday with no elected officials involved, it'd be for full-time employees of the town. And part-time, regularly scheduled employees of the town. Guys, follow that, I said no elected officials. Part-time, hourly, regular, scheduled employees.
Okay.
Doesn't matter if it's twenty hours a week or ten, as long as you're regularly scheduled.
Yeah, yeah. So that will expand the people who don't get it this year over last year.
Yeah, last year was just four elected officials that were included.
Jeff can go to a food.
Stop reading stuff in the backwards. Past tense. Um so I've got a motion to you second.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it.
Yeah, no, um.
We need a second on this.
A second.
Motion's been made, second, open for discussion. Having none heard.
So do we, do we want to, how many more does that exempt? I'm just trying to figure out.
Four. Just four.
No, more, it'll be a few more now.
No.
Because you said any elected official is exempt from the gift cards.
Yeah.
So the road agent will be, won't get one now.
Nobody gets one, no elected official.
I understand, that's not what you did last year.
That's right, so we're losing four. More we did. We're losing four from what we did last year, nothing to do with more or less.
You can read that.
So there was four people on that.
Right, so now it'll be eight, you're saying?
No, there's, there's no elected officials.
We are not including the tax collector, the treasurer, the town clerk.
I know, those are the exceptions to the.
So there's four that we allowed in last year.
And we're not including, not including election officials, not including all the all the other.
Not including the select board, tax collector.
Yeah.
The uh.
So I just took out all elected people instead of trying to do some.
Which I think is much fairer.
I do too, I just, I just don't know why you're not agreeing with the fact that you're excluding more.
We are, we're excluding four more people from getting it.
That is correct.
So I didn't include anybody in my word, to keep it simpler.
Okay, I I I agree with that, because I want the consistency of if you're gonna exclude some elected officials, you should exclude all of them.
Amen, thank you for coming to that. You know, I picked you because you were supposed to be easy. All right.
We're gonna keep you straight.
Motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You sure?
I am.
That's the longest part of meeting.
Why don't I go ahead?
You guys are okay, we're going to thirty?
Because the cost increases, so I think thirty's fair.
Why I spoke the difference?
Well, since we're.
Oh, don't start with that again.
Since we're saving all the money excluding more people, we'll have money for the thirty now.
Twenty seven fifty.
Could be a flat budget somehow, right?
Actually, he just chipped in for the increase to thirty.
Okay, um take mine, divide it up. I'm gonna go um. I'm gonna go to mailbox before I do public comments of.
Oh, yeah, usual.
I think this is out of order a little bit.
Well, I have to break.
Okay. We have FYI for the fire chief. Has turned in a twenty twenty-two Samsung cellphone. That he had from Verizon to offer to any other town official. So as part of our new policy that we signed in place, if a town official has something they no longer use in their department. We're gonna offer it to other departments. Um and then if nobody uses it from there, we'll sell it off. Jeff, you gonna really need your cell phone?
Shovels, we got a couple shovels.
Shovels?
Yeah, we we don't need anymore.
Grave diggers?
Nah.
No, do you need any cell phones for any of your on-call people?
Not that I'm aware of.
No? Um.
I'll send them an email blast to people.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure this Verizon phone can be used on our system.
Yeah.
As long, as long as it's paid for, then then that serial number is released by.
Verizon.
Verizon, and so, yeah, a SIM card can convert it over to any other carrier.
All right.
Yeah.
The only time they hold them is if you, like if you're on one of those two-year plans or something and you're paying a certain amount per month.
Okay. So the next thing on here, we have an invoice. It says sign here, but I don't need to sign this, right?
Yeah, uh no, no, it's already done, it's in work in progress.
Um so anyway, um NADOC has an invoice here, they have started the pest control at the transfer station and there was a. Um a large area where there was nesting for the rats that they found in the back corners of buildings, so. That being said, I saw tons of bait stations out there and.
Yeah, I think that report says that it put out a hundred and four.
Yeah.
Bait.
Uh blocks, so there's several blocks in each bait station. All right. And FYI, there was a memorandum sent out to um town employees on the medical and dental rates for twenty twenty-six. We asked them to do that last week, I think, so.
Thank you, Leo, I know one year we were kind of late and sent it up.
I'm trying to stay on top of it.
Yeah, excellent.
Um there was open enrollment here for flexible spending accounts, that was sent out as well. Right, Lee?
Yes, that's correct. I still have to send out the um memo on using leave and reminder and then the credit card charges, so. We'll have to go out the next week or so.
The next thing on here. Um this is a hundred dollar donation here from. On ECO One Rescue.
The town donated that on behalf of a um employee bereavement rather than flowers.
Oh.
That was an option that they chose. Sending us a thank you.
So there's a thank you for a hundred dollar. We have a um community power update um in here as well, Dana, why don't I let you? Over this update if you can and want that to review.
Sure. So uh we had approval to, uh the selectmen had previously voted to approve us to move forward if we got uh suitable pricing on community power. And there was a dip in natural gas rates which directly affects electric power recently.
An increase, not a dip, right?
There was a decrease in natural gas rates for a brief period of time. Uh to two dollars and ninety cents or so, and that actually brought electric rates down to a point where we had actionable pricing for Dunbar and community power. The week that we were looking, we were then gonna get the contract, the rates went from two dollars and ninety cents up to three dollars and fifty cents. Natural gas, they increased dramatically. We were able to um retain what they had kind of quoted us on the previous week. Saying we'll still honor the rates that are below the utility rates. And so on that Wednesday, it was a week ago yesterday, um Lena and I spent a lot of time together going through the different proposals here and we did sign. For a Dunbar and community power contract of eleven months. And their their rates uh will be, will be listed there. Um so we're slightly below Eversource, um slightly more below Unitil's um prices. And it is for eleven months, it'll be for January first through November thirtieth.
And when do they adjust their rates?
Uh.
Eversource.
Eversource and Unitil are both um obligated by the PUC to adjust their rates on February first and August first.
So.
So we don't know what the February first rates are, that comes out around December fifteenth. And then uh it's always about six weeks prior to that date that the the rates will come out, so we'll learn around on December fifteenth whether.
But if nothing else, we're protecting the current rate pretty much for another eleven months.
We are.
So, that's good, I was hoping, uh when Lee told me about it, I was kind of shocked because. Again, I was hoping to do a three-year, a thirty-month deal.
Yeah.
And I was dismayed, to say the least, that again, we sat down at the table. And whenever the rates are good, the timing is short. And had I known that was gonna be the policy up front, I probably wouldn't have gone this way at all. Because I think that they're playing games with us or.
Well, I don't think they're playing games, I'll be honest with you.
Well, I think it is what it is, but it is kind of a game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the volatility in natural gas rates caused um all the suppliers to pull back their twenty-four and six, thirty-six month offers. So basically, every supplier said, um, we don't trust natural gas rates as the primary source of our electricity, or at least six, I think it's forty or sixty percent, somewhere in there. And so they did pull it back. Um, so this is kind of a market-driven thing, just like you buying any other commodity, um, metals or fuel or anything like that.
Yeah, my whole thing though was long-term and not short-term.
I agree. So, here's the, here's the bonus to this, is that now we'll be in this for eleven months. It is totally optional for any resident to join it. Um, they could.
Well, they're all gonna be joined automatically.
If they don't opt out, yes. So there's an op- there's an opt-out option. They could choose a different, um, they could choose less renewable or more renewable, and the prices will be in a postcard that everybody, every resident will get. So that's up, up and coming. Those prices will be there. Um, we, we will be holding a public hearing. I think we're likely deciding on December first.
Correct.
Um, as the, as the public hearing date, so it would allow residents to come in prior to having to make a decision. On this.
Is that a requirement?
Uh, it is by the PUC, yes. You have to have a public hearing on it. Um, and over, the point I was gonna make is over the eleven-month period of time that we're in this. We can continually shop for a better or a longer rate. So all of next summer, for example. If we see rates drop and there's a thirty-six month option in there for us to pick, we could say, we want, we want that to. Dovetail into the end of our contract in thirty-six months from December first.
So December first, we could actually tie it in anytime during the summer, lock in that rate?
That's correct. If you can get a.
A good rate.
If you can get a supplier to say, yes, I'll start selling you electricity.
But isn't that the job of Community Power to get that for us?
Oh yeah, they're gonna be the ones monitoring this and, and shopping for us. We don't have to do that. But we will now be open for, you know, that full eleven months to be able to shop.
Which is alright.
For a new, for any new.
Even if it's for twelve months.
So if there's any, allegedly, if there's any dips in, you know, in prices during that eleven months.
Right.
We could decide to say, yes, do that starting December first.
Now, who determines the length of the contract?
The suppliers do.
Suppliers. So the thing is, we're, Community Power is kinda like our advocates are at.
Well, if they're getting it from five, pricing from five suppliers and they don't offer the longer terms, they can't get it to us.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So EC, ECM Power, who's, who is our agent, is the one that's always out there shopping for us. And they, they're acting on our behalf to try and get us the lower rates.
I understand we're in with the Town of Dairy on this rate?
Franklin now?
Uh, it's Plastow.
Plastow.
Uh, Plastow.
Not the original paperwork said dairy, but they.
Now, there was another company that was.
Exactly. I had mentioned Plastow in this email, if that's what you're referring to. Uh, that actually allowed us to get, now just care- bear in mind, if any resident, I know Leo, you brought this up before. If you went out shopping for electric rates right now, you're gonna see twelve and a half, thirteen and a half, fourteen, fifteen.
I'm just looking today, as a matter of fact. Not that I wanted, I just got this email telling me they could give me a good rate, and I started looking through it. It's all up there, like you just said.
Yeah. Um, so this is gonna be eleven point two cents a kilowatt hour. You can't find that except for, there's a few teaser rates of three months that are out there.
Yeah, I saw that three months, yeah.
Yeah. You can, I think you can find a nine point nine for three months, but that's gonna jump up to fifteen, nineteen, whatever.
Well, they're just hoping that people don't change it at the end of the day.
Don't change it, yeah. And three months isn't really a reasonable thing. I, I wouldn't advise anybody to go for a three-month, um, agreement. So this does beat, um, anything that a resident could get on their own. Um, by probably about two cents a kilowatt hour, if not even slightly more.
Yeah.
Um, so we did.
Only now seven cents?
We did have the buying power of our town plus Plastow is one of the towns. Um, to get, to get a, a lower rate than what a resident could get on their own. So the buying power did show.
Okay.
And tho- and those.
Well, thanks for your work on that.
Twelve to fifteen cent or so rates, um, actually, I don't even know if you can get twelve. Twelve and a half might have been the lowest thing, and that was, might have been a short rate.
Well, there, I think what I saw was, uh, nine months, uh, stuff like that, you know? Three months was the lowest, like you said. But I, I know, but like you said, that's a teaser rate.
It is a teaser.
They get you in there, and then you just leave it, and you're paying the higher rates, you know?
Yeah.
But, uh, I was just looking at it, not to get any involved in it, but it just made me curious about what, where the rates are, and they are high, as you said.
They are high.
Yeah.
And so anybody can, when, when, uh, the notice comes out that everybody's gonna get a mailing on it, plus, uh, we'll have a public hearing. On it on December first. Anybody could ask questions. They could go, we'll provide the website. You can go look on your own if you think you can, you know, do better.
Are you guys gonna put that on your Community Power as well as the town?
It's already on the town right now.
Yes.
Energy community?
As far as the posting of the, yes, yeah.
There was one more organization that we were, uh, at least briefly, uh, looking at. It was, uh, stationed out of Massachusetts.
Yep.
And, uh, they were offering like, uh.
A ten percent.
Yes.
Reduction on, that would be just for the town buildings.
Okay, just town buildings?
Just town buildings, not resident impacting. And that's actually not progressing as I had hoped, so that's probably not gonna come to fruition.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll find out more on that, but totally separate from this, and that would only be for town buildings.
Okay.
Circle or follow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys for your hard work on that.
Okay.
And a lot of hard work.
And you know, if nothing else, it's gonna protect us for eleven months, so.
Yeah.
Good work doing that.
I mean, we'll hopefully, you know, hopefully we look very good come February first, when the.
I would imagine you're gonna.
When the winter rates come up.
Middle of winter, winter rates are typically higher.
Yeah.
That's why you're seeing the higher rates in there.
I mean, I, I see the call a year ago, was it twenty cents or an insane?
Oh yeah.
Twenty-two, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. CIP current plan for, um, used during our budget, so we can look at it.
Keeps coming up.
I did reiterate to Woody today, we're trying to get a forklift price. So I thought if we could run that skid steer one more year and get a forklift, there's a lot more people that could operate it, as you and I saw today.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, Woody's operating that, and everybody else is waiting for him to run that equipment. If we had a forklift, many people, I think, could operate it.
And I think being inside of a building like that and that type of equipment, um, I think looking at an all-electric one. Might be an option because of the, um, the rebates that are available.
Yeah. I think that that's a good idea, and they've come a long way with them. The other ones are propane, but you smell that propane smell.
Oh, you sure do.
My work has an open building, and I smell them.
Yeah.
So I would, I would liken to look into that.
The grants are significant for an all-electric.
I, 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 I support.
Vehicle like that, yeah.
Do you have any, um, grants that you could kinda push for him to start reviewing?
Uh, we could connect them with the, um, Central New Hampshire, um. What, Regional Transportation Planning, who had, who brought us information a meeting ago.
I wonder if, you know, clean diesel, if we tell them we're replacing our skid steer with that as well.
Uh, Clean Diesel also has grants.
You know, they're big grants from that Clean Diesel. We tell them we're replacing our inside, uh, forklift.
It's just greater to go electric.
No, I, I understand that. So you're replacing the diesel.
Yeah.
Skid steer with electric forklift.
Oh.
So you might be able to get grants on both avenues, is what I'm thinking.
Uh, yeah, I don't know about that.
Cause I know those Clean Diesel, uh, they get money every year. They're mailing us stuff too, but they're for Jeff's truck. I mean, I can't see us going to find.
I could find, um, I could get the information as far as, um, where we would look for grants. Where these grants are available. I, I, I don't remember the organization that has them, and I'm not an expert on what the grants are.
I know.
You've probably heard of them because they'll take older diesel trucks.
They wanted to get them out of service. Either you sell them, a lot of times they want the motors destroyed in.
That's right.
So they can't be resold or reused. And the key is to get them out of service.
Yes.
That's the capital.
They actually force you to.
Keep it for a span.
They force you to drill the block.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. They want them out of service.
Yeah.
Is the end reason.
So you do have to appro- to get the grants approved, you have.
Can't just say we're gonna replace it and put it back.
You have, we have to take this skid steer and bury it in the field.
Cannibalize it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can take, right, you can take all the accessories, you can take everything off of it, you can take tires off of it.
Yeah, you just can't.
I'd say we start with this forklift as a starting point.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you want me to find the information on the grants and?
It would be helpful if you did.
To Woody or to Lee, or to you?
I think, I think get them to Woody. You can see, see me on it.
Okay.
I think the more of us that put eyes on it.
N E, N O E or N E O? I, I get their flyers about the.
I know the Clean Diesel ones, we have to have a lead man from that as well.
We do. I do. I get a lot of them.
Diesel and electric equipment brands. Okay.
And I'm just thinking if we can either combine them or get one of the two. And maybe hold off one year on the purchase of the skid steer, um.
You'd have, you, to get the grant, I think you'd have to.
Clean diesel, you gotta sell it.
You'd have to assassinate the skid steer.
But if we assassinate and buy another one the next year, then it's nothing. Same, we can't do that.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And just live with the plow trucks and the forklift for the long year.
Yeah.
We'll see. I just think it's interesting, and I think we have a lot more people that can operate that type of equipment.
Sure.
Okay, so thanks for getting that to us. We look at it during our budget season.
Yeah, we'll put it in the mailbox, and then we'll bring it out for meetings.
And we all have some homework reading in our.
Are they coming to present to us?
Um, I sent them the dates of the select board meetings for the next couple of months. I have it back. But I did tell them that the last couple of audits, they have not come before the board, so I'm trying to encourage them to come in.
Put that in the pile, stick that in my mailbox. I'm gonna open up for public comment while you guys are here. Leo?
Lee, Martell.
Your name?
Lee Martell, what, twenty-five, uh, Tenille Road.
Thank you, Leo.
Um, so, not a complaint, Lee, but can we get the minutes, uh, the agenda's published again?
It did, but it didn't get on until five o'clock there. I was in two meetings.
Oh, I was on at five. I was on at five.
Then I'd been five thirty. I can't remember in our interviews, so.
Okay, so it's alright. I, I mean, you know, I'm not complaining.
We can go on five forty.
But, um, with that said, also, um, so I, we were talking about, uh, the complaints earlier, and I saw a lot of complaints about every department. Because everybody got their tax bills.
Okay.
Well, the problem is, all these complaints, I'm reading these complaints, and these people don't even know what they're talking about. And so my point here is that maybe, I'm recording this, and only a handful of people are bothering, looking at it, cause they, a few people know. Can we put a, this on the, uh, marquee out there that these are posted, so people can educate them? Remember last year, we had a group of people came in to complain, voiced their concerns?
Yeah.
And everybody said, how, how do we know what's going on here? And I, I was here and I explained to them to watch the videos. They didn't know.
We could put it on that marquee. Four select board meetings are on the town website.
Yeah, for your.
Shortly after we meet every Thursday.
And because now with, you know, with budget season coming in, people can see what's going on.
Why don't we put the following weeks against a little window? Cause sometimes they're not up for a few weeks.
Well, say, uh, you know, every other week, you know, or whatever. But anyways, i- if we can put something up and then maybe post it in a library. In front of the taxpayers' window, you know, so that way people can see.
Yeah, we even are a bulletin board right there.
Yeah, right. So people could see that, and then maybe if they pay attention, they'll understand a little more.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, cause a lot of people never come up to the town.
What's that?
To register their car.
Right, right. A lot of people complained, as you said, about the, the plowing, the lousy highway department.
I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of posters in front of like the town clerk's office, but maybe one out there in the hall somewhere.
Yeah, so that way while they're paying, they can see that, and you know.
I'd rather not have it on the doorway.
Because I, like I said, I, I saw where, if you read them, I, it looks like, it sounds like you read them.
Oh.
They, people didn't know what they were talking about.
Yeah, I know.
And because their taxes went way up. So like, I posted, I never do this, but I, today I posted, look to the school. And that's all I said, because, you know, if you look at the, well, if you look at this, I looked, I went back and looked at the tax rates. The tax rate for the town itself isn't moving, really. It's the, it's not the town's portion that's going up, it's the school's.
What they have to understand is their rate, would have, their taxes would have gone up regardless of the.
Well, I, I understand. I understand, but my point is the complaints are not, are not geared towards that building. The complaints are geared, geared to this room.
There was virtually no school complaints. It was all like, the police department, fire department, Jeff, everybody, you know, so.
Really? All of that is posted on Facebook? I don't think.
Uh, yeah, Donna Dunn sent it in to me, uh, to Gail. I read it because I was curious.
So there, um, I'll, I'll make two comments. Um, one of them is the, we do wanna let the townspeople know that there was a one-time. Hit on the taxes of, I think it was thirty-nine cents or something per thousand to purchase this property up here on Route thirteen. So people need to be aware that that's a, that's a single-year bump.
Yeah, but, but Dana, you don't, you know, the, the tax rate on the town side didn't go up much at all.
Right.
Again, it's the school, so.
Yeah.
You know, when you're complaining about your taxes going up, skyrocketing, mine went up over ten percent, probably eleven, twelve percent.
Okay.
Okay, so that's quite a bit, but it's because of the school, uh, budget that went up exorbitantly.
Sure.
This one didn't.
So the other thing I was just gonna say, again, I mean, whoever's watching here as opposed to, you know, the people who are commenting on Facebook. Uh, I did calculate out, the town is nineteen percent of your tax bill. Uh, the county is ten percent. Local schools, sixty-five percent.
Exactly.
And state education portion is six percent. So schools are seventy-one percent.
Right.
Of the taxes, and the town nineteen.
The state tax is going to the school.
It is, it's just.
Right, so add that to the school.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Cause they're not, you're not getting it here.
But, but that, those are numbers that we didn't.
And that's, that's my point. People don't seem to understand. They're gonna blame this room here all the time. And it's gotta be kinda like, you know, the people that are complaining are the ones that are going there and voting for everything over there, and then they come back and chew you out.
That being said, on the news tonight. There was a statewide case that, uh, nineteen, eighteen or nineteen communities were involved with. Where the state was underfunding the school systems. And that was on WMUR, and there was just a court awarded them. That the state is actually gonna pay the attorney's fees, and that the state will be readjusting the amounts that they're providing those communities. And I don't know if Dunbarton's in that or not.
I know that they, when we set the tax rate, their projected revenues were increased a hundred, a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but this is, this is recent, right?
Oh, that, that's the sweat.
So this would be above and beyond if we were part of those communities, an additional amount from the state. I, I don't. You couldn't read into it any further than that on the news, but.
Yeah. Every time that gets, they, they think they got it screened out, it doesn't get any better.
No, I mean, people, uh, it was almost humorous in the Facebook. I'm in favor of a, uh, sales tax in the state. I mean, there's someone, someone like, I want a sales tax now. As if it's gonna lower the, it's, nothing goes lower. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we've done mailboxes, and, uh, did you have something else?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. I don't really take a lot of credit, wanna hear about Facebook, to be honest with you. But having said that, a lot of people rely on it for their education.
Yep.
I am disillusioned with the tax system a little bit. My properties were fairly new, some of it, so my taxes really didn't get affected a lot. My evaluation went up. Which has got me a little nervous, because as we move forward, progress here, every time we do something, whether it's the highway department or. The school or whatever, you know, everything affects here. The tax rate has broken down that per thousand. Everything's referenced, it's always gonna cost you ten cents a thousand, or a dollar a thousand. And I understand, and I understand how the system works. But where I'm having my biggest problem is. We had a letter sent around back in the springtime. That said we were gonna be reassessed, and the assessments came out, and they were sticker shock. I read the whole thing. The first line in the thing said, this is a preliminary assessment. And they set up some meetings where you could come meet the assessors, which was a very small window.
Very small.
Very small, very limited. That went away. No other thing else was ever said about it. We get a tax bill this week in the mail. It looks like those preliminary assessments are now permanent assessments. How did we go from preliminary to permanent? Talking loosely with the assessors, I didn't get a chance to set up on a point one. They said because of the increased values of the houses, because of what people are selling them for. So if we have to pay a lot of money to have an assessment done, and all they're doing is going through the registry of deeds and going. Oh, house on eighteen Stock Highway North sold for eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That makes your house worth eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. It kinda seems like assessment, I always thought, was when you came to your property, you looked to see the quality of the stuff in your house. Scale of size and all that, and did a fair assessment. If you have an appraisal done, that's the way it's done. But it looks to me like these guys said, hey, they're willing to pay that, we're gonna tack that sticker on your house. As we've all heard the stories, people have put a price on their house for X number of dollars.
Yeah.
And they have an open house, and the price goes up because people are willing to pay more. So to me, that's an inflated price. So I'm not particularly happy with the way the assessment shaked down here for us. I, I think it's pretty poor. And I'd like to know what we really get from the assessors for this assessment. I am just mystified. If they, if we relied on sales.
It is supposed to be a hundred percent current market value.
Yeah.
And it is, unfortunately, by sales that are currently happening right now.
Yeah.
And we are, I think, we're in an inflated market. And if the market goes down.
We're not gonna get any relief. They're not gonna come back and readjust them.
No. So the only adjustment we get is if our taxes went down.
Yeah.
Which very rarely do the needs of the town go down. The only thing that I didn't understand is, we talked earlier about having. However many million dollars worth of new houses in Dunbar, right? So these houses came. So these houses came up and were built in town and I know that not all of them have school kids. And I know that an average house in town, all said and done, after it's in town a while, it costs about a hundred and twenty-five percent more than if it was just raw land, a hundred percent. But not all of them has, we talked about all these houses were built, these developments in the last couple of years and all this additional revenue we're getting. Where you can't see any benefit from those houses when you're looking at our tax base. Because our taxes keep going up, those houses haven't helped us one bit.
If the two key components of the tax rate keep going up a million dollars combined, you're gonna see a tax rate increase. And the school.
But you told us we had all, like three million dollars worth of new houses.
We did, we did, and and our our budget alone was over four hundred thousand dollars. Whether you say it's a flat budget or not, the last year our budget was four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so even if we keep it even because we have excess revenues, it's still going up.
Correct, right, and so back to the revale, we did a statistical revale which is based on sales and the way they determine the sales is they use twenty-four months before the current date and up through like April or a certain date in in the current year. So it's not just the market today, yes, two years ago, those those prices were really high. But before we started our statistical revale, we were at fifty-seven percent. It's required by the state that we revale every, go through a revaluation every five years and then they audit our, uh the the assessor that is awarded that bid. We only spent, we spent combined with the utility appraisals less than the seventy thousand dollars for that Warren article. By going forward, if we have to have a statist, uh a full-blown revaluation, it's gonna cost the taxpayers a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, cause that's when they knock on the door. And that's when they look at everybody's measurements, um conditions and everything else. The DRA, and I sent an email, I think, did I see see the selectmen on that one? I typically get, uh the the DRA came into my office that I have pulled fifteen or twenty cards and I'm gonna be visiting all these properties to make sure that what they said is their current assessment, there's nothing that's been missed on those random selected parcels that they used during the market analysis for the.
It was a check on the DRA check on the.
They're checking on the company that has a a license to assess properties and to make sure that they haven't missed and their information is accurate. So right now, after this revale, our our, we are now at like ninety-seven point eight percent, so we're at like ninety-eight percent. And that was our goal, is to get our property assessment and they didn't hit the the structures, they hit the land. Because the land was the one, what was the.
Well, they hit both on some.
Oh, they did, I mean, I I went from six hundred up to a million dollars and I had land in current use. So if I didn't have land in current use, I'd be over a million dollars in assessment, going from six hundred thousand dollars, so. There were big increases for property homes and.
So anyway, Lean's correct, even though our budget, we've been keeping it flat with excess revenues, every year if we go up two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollars to 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 get everything we need, whether it's an ambulance or a truck and this and that, our overall budget the next year is up by that four hundred thousand, even though we covered that increase that one year with excess revenues. Almost every year I've been here, we've been able to cover the previous year increases, but it's a one-time break, your your tax rate's still up there.
Own that budget unless you cut budget and you you tell your department.
But our tax rate went from, what, twenty-eight, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven fifty seven.
Twenty-seven fifty-four, down to sixteen, point three four, so it went down over ten and a half cents. So our tax rates way low now, very low. But our assessments are higher, if the economy somehow crashes, we could find ourselves, our house assessments at a hundred and twenty, thirty percent. You know, they could be overvalued and then we could do a correction, but it probably would go up and back down again and and fall through a cycle.
I was fortunate enough, we built the house on too long ago, so the assessment on the house wasn't too far off. The land went up, but it didn't go up dramatically, one of our other properties was way out of scale, and I knew it was. But I'm just more concerned with the first statement that letter was sent out.
They didn't give you long, we had like four days.
Preliminary assessment and that's all I wanna know, how did it go from preliminary to permanent?
So the, I can answer that.
Yeah, I mean.
The reason for that wording, which I think was re, is required by a state assessment like that, is because you have the opportunity to.
It was a damn thin opportunity. I mean, it was two days for about four hours.
Yeah, I think they, I think they extended the time.
They did.
Yeah, but you didn't know that.
You you didn't know, but if you did call.
They extended the time, but it wasn't face to face, it was on the phone. I did it on the phone call.
I wouldn't mind paying seventy-five thousand dollars, although they ain't able to get a meeting. Instead of paying another seventy.
You might go up more, you might not.
I mean, I, um the only other thing I would um say so is preliminary because they allowed for exceptions or you know, conversations or even errors that came up, there were some errors in terms of some people's land was was valued at, you know, stupid numbers, like it came out wrong, so they had to fix them.
Point is the file an abatement, and that's why.
So Lean is correct, when you hit your tax bill, the next step, if you don't like this tax bill.
Well, I I just, I'd like an explanation, that's all. And the last time I met with him for an explanation, alls I got was, we set up a computer model and we punch it in there. Where's that model come from? And I went round and round and I couldn't get any where the model came from, so I don't know where this model comes from.
Well, their model, once they went out to your house originally, you have that original assessment. If anything was changed or updated in your house, there shouldn't be a building permit, they should have gone out during that time.
I got no problem with that. I'm just nervous for everybody's assessment moving forward. It's not, I was fortunate, our taxes probably went down a few dollars, wanna know the truth.
No, we don't wanna know that.
They went down a few bucks, I still pay a lot of taxes, but they went down a few bucks. I'm fine with that. The other thing I've got a little concern about is we touched on it for a short second about utilities. Alls I see, particular power lines in town, they're putting brand-new poles in, upgrading the wires and all that. And I thought we'd been battling the assessment on our utilities because of they were overcharging the assessment on the infrastructure. Now they've got a lot of brand-new infrastructure that they write off or depreciate over time and are we picking that up? Yeah, I hope so, because I mean.
Twenty thousand dollars of that Warren article for the utility.
Yeah, but alls I've heard for years about this guy Sansoussi and I said court and all this and that and everything else, and alls I know is I see a lot of brand-new telephone poles being put in.
Are we on the last year with Sansoussi?
We are, but he's submitted another five-year renewal contract for the board of assessors to consider. Now, with with uh Sansoussi, he has picked up and what we're currently working with is a new formula for utilities. That the DRA has approved and was partially and mostly developed by George Sansoussi. So there is an agreed new formula for these issues that have passed that we're just trying to close the door on seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Going forward, I haven't had an abatement from the utility company for the last three years because the formula that we're currently using is what has been approved by the state. The abatements were uh utility companies using a formula that was developed in nineteen forty. And the state never updated that calculation, whereas George Sansoussi said, no, there's still value in this and this is how and why I am determining these right-of-ways or these other sections that weren't being picked up that are are related to value.
So the selectmen are gonna get to see this new contract?
The board of assessors, that's the separation of power. Board of assessors deals with the assessing, board of selectmen deal with the budget.
Yeah, but the assessors don't have any money.
It's nothing to do with money, there's no.
Contract for Sansoussi.
Correct, and if if, so George Sansoussi's contract has been ten thousand dollars a year to do annual pickups. And he typically brings in anywhere from two million to fifteen. The board of assessors. That his new revenue for just the four utilities that we have on the books brings in anywhere from two million to fifteen or twenty million. And that's because he goes every year and he does, looks at the new permits, new polls. He contacts the town clerk and says how many permits were filed with the clerk and he does.
I'm not talking about the telephone poles, I'm talking about high-line transmissions, they don't get anything from the town clerk's office at all.
Well, there's, there's some.
They don't, they don't get the full permits, the full licensing like they do with the street poles. That's a totally, I just, that's all, I wanna make sure somebody's actually.
There's a report.
Alls I know is he got jammed up out in the Midwest a few years ago on some shenanigans. I'm not telling you a story.
No, I heard about it.
He got jammed up out there.
I think the courts ruled in his favor ultimately in the end.
Okay, I beg to differ.
There's a a a report that a utility company is supposed to file with the towns every single year, the PA twenty-eight. And that basically tells the utility appraiser everything that they've changed within their right-of-ways. So if they've installed new lines.
Does anyone go out and put eyes on it and check?
That's their job, they they have that as, just like I, when we send MRI out there for the building permits. Their annual pickups and the assessor's contract says that I will go out annually and look at.
So who's doing that?
George Sansoussi's office does utilities and then MRI.
Look at MRI.
MRI does the residential.
So Sansoussi's office, from what I understood by look at his billing, was fighting over in court. I didn't think they were putting updates on it yearly as they get the polls.
He has to do annual pickups, four years of regular pickups that they go out to the towns and and um monitor these changes and then in the year of a revale, they still get their same fee that they've spread out over five years.
Like a pamphlet from them with the changes, Lean? Does it get a a pamphlet with the changes?
I just got the the forms just like you have here, but I have the utility values I can put in your mailbox or email them too. I have an electronic.
Yeah, I guess let's email them, then we can look at them a little bit, huh? I do know Justin, every year, they don't do them all. They'll go out, make a brand-new road to go out there, but they have only so much permitting to cross wetlands.
They stay with the wetlands permits because they can get a temporary one for a short period of time, they do several polls. Then they come back and they get a new wetlands permit because it's got something to do with the square footage of the impact.
The road was all the way down to the big rock. And but they missed several polls, the next year they came to do some other polls and there's still like one or two.
We're coming back to your neighborhood again.
And I, and I I saw that, could we get the email of the wetland permitting and I can see which power lines are going.
I remember just, Sansoussi's talking about, I mean, they, there's a power line, poles were put up in the thirties, in the forties. And supposedly the utilities were claiming it has no value, he he challenged that in a sense.
Yeah, that was, that's old history, we fought about that for years. It is, but we're still in that, we're in the last year of it.
Well, you've managed to stretch it out. Well, I think the utility stretched out because they keep applying for maintenance. Well, whatever, anyway, I just hope we're getting picked up on all these new.
But you know, when you say they have in the last three years, I don't know what the the Trump did, like public service went way back many years when they first came out with the uh original lawsuit. And all of his towns hired Sansoussi to fight all this one, is what happens, so we're paying a portion of his bill. But if he's no longer required, I don't know why we would be paying him anymore if there's no lawsuits.
Well, that's in a different line, that's in a legal line, there's still an assessing pickup line under the board of assessors budget.
And so he's gone from the lawsuit formula to the regular, looking at it yearly.
Correct, yeah.
And things recall that they were gonna, we were gonna Northern Pass and upgrading other lines. We wanted it to be upgraded because we would have picked up so much more uh value in the infrastructure that they would have to pass through Dunbar, non-existing telephone, I mean, existing power lines, but it never came to fruition, we lost out. Not Northern Pass, but there was another project that went on, went on the future, it was Northern Pass two.
Yeah, very similar, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, Joe, if you'd like to see a copy of it then.
No, I just wanna make sure we get one, we're hopefully getting one, that's all.
No, I'm agreeing with you, it is odd how they do it and to make sure they do the pickup on. But I think the permitting is out there for the well and it should be easy to follow.
It is, it's very easy and anytime I get those permits from the clerk, I forward to the office. Everyone in my office knows, forwarded to Saint Souzy's office.
They do, okay.
No, but he, I, I, is there an alternative than Mr. Saint Souzy, that's the question too, are we stuck with him?
There are very few, yes, MRI does do several pounds for their utilities and their utility values are usually one-third of their, of our assessment for our utilities. So there is a big difference in what he's capable of.
Delivery.
Delivering for us.
I don't see why there would be a difference, they assess the value. It must be the number of lines or poles that go through it. Well, that only makes sense, I mean, they gotta use, they put it in a computer program and it punches it out. So how can you make a mistake?
Well, I don't know if we can, we can ask this, but now that his pricing is up for a new contract, it'd be nice if they got a couple of contracts to check.
When it comes to bid?
The assessing department, you said MRI has one as well.
They offer utility assessment.
So I would have asked them to give us an assessment on it if it was needed. You know, if it's up for renewal right now, this would be the time to do it. Just to make sure we are, we've been with him for a lot of years. And I don't know what it costs or doesn't cost.
Well, when the assessing department comes in with their budget review, we can ask those questions also.
It'd be nice if they were ready to answer those.
Right, but let's give the heads up one of those.
Okay, is this the, uh is this it for public comment? Alright, I'm gonna bring it back to Lean, you have anything for us this week? Okay, I'll bring it to Dana.
Uh two quick items. We uh we have a workshop with the planning boards, we're still working on the sign uh ordinance. Uh a new sign ordinance for us, we we've been meeting, making great progress on that. Uh and we do expect to have something available for a town meeting vote. So that's still being worked and we have four people working on that uh right now. The second item is Lean and I are working on some updates to the personnel policy that we'll bring before this board, uh we're not ready just yet, I think I've reported on that before.
That's great. Dana, just in case you forgot, did you wanna lean in on anything you found out with the uh uniform company since Jeff's here and he uses them as well?
Um well, so I did talk to the general manager of the of the uniform company yesterday because of some issues that have been occurring out of the transfer station with not getting certain piece.
Product back.
Certain product back, I don't know if that, you're having this a similar problem or not.
Pete don't mention it once in a while, but he doesn't, it doesn't rule his life. You know what I mean, whatever it is, he just, he'll sometimes he'll make a comment, but I don't know. I never was involved, I let Woody negotiate that all out. And I just know what costs us something. I know he has some ongoing issues with.
Yeah, I think, okay, so I think there are um just a couple of operational issues that I want to uh work with Woody on and get settled out in terms of if there's discrepancies on the deliveries in terms of not getting everything back that's supposed to be getting back, I want that recorded um on a weekly basis so that we get the proper credit for something not coming back. Um I think it's a fairly easy thing to solve, um I don't know sure why it continues to be an issue, although I did hear about cellphone coverage and the tablets that the uniform guys have don't connect or anything like that, but um well.
I thought it was easy when I tackled it in the year.
Yeah, he he, Dave sicked me on it cause, because he wasn't able to come to fruition on.
I talked with our our old rep, William, I think you said his name was.
Will is the uh.
He never met with me face to face, but I had several phone calls with him about how this can be resolved. The girl in the office, I know her name was Diane, Donna, maybe? But Woody would call her once a month in past and say, listen, I have my receipts here, this, 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 we're missing. And she would take once a month and clean the bill up. And then she was told by somebody, maybe the guy you're talking to, John, don't do that any longer.
Let the drivers do it.
The driver doesn't have it straightened out, it's on the bill. So when Hope and I got to it in the middle of last year or so, there was like somewhere between forty and sixty dollars that had been carried on for like a year of five dollars this month, seven. Of five dollars this month, seven fifty this month, three dollars a month, two dollars five. And I said, oh, pay them off, clean it up, we have to start from ground zero.
Yeah.
Okay, I talked with Bill, and his driver was supposed to correct. As Woody showed you today, they get, the driver gets a copy that's printed out at the company they ship them from. So they all get noted when they're picked up, how many comes. So like, if you've got nine shirts and only eight go out to them, then that gets marked. So all that gets marked as they take it out, and when they bring it back, he gets, the driver gets a copy from where they ship it out of the factory there. That's what's supposed to be there, but most time that package doesn't match what we actually get. So then Woody's supposed to correct them, why that's Woody's job and not the driver's job is beyond me. But they say it's Woody's job to correct it, cuz he's the one complaining about it, so they want him to correct it, so he'll tell them, we're missing four shirts, two jackets. And in the winter time, we only have two jackets, so when one doesn't come back, they have to, they can't put their dirty one back in. They're wearing that one for another month, or whatever it is, or I don't know how often they wash them. They love the pants, uh, seems to be shirts and jacket issue from what I'm understanding, but anyway. Woody's correcting the paperwork, and now the guy's tablet doesn't work while he's in charge, and the guy says, I gotta leave here right now. But I'll give you, uh, I'll send you a printout later or whatever, because I'm gonna put it in when I go down the road. So half the time he gets them, half the time he doesn't get them, and so it's been kind of an ongoing battle to get it right. It should be easy, even if it's handwritten, if it's handwritten, and he, the guy signs a bottom note or something, but.
Yeah, well, we're also gonna, we just talked today, right, about the fact that maybe the guy can connect to the wifi out of the transfer station and not rely on cell service. So he can do it right there.
So I'm sure Dana can get to the bottom of this problem.
And, and a year from now, I'll come back and.
I, I just know that, I've heard some stories, I guess they had a lot of trouble with drivers.
Yeah.
Turnover and stuff, and we never would see the same guy twice, we don't usually see him, if by hit or miss, he'll show up. The day moves around, when they come, they leave Pete's gear at the highway garage, they take dirty clothes. Now, if they, let's say they were gonna come on a Monday, and they start coming on a Monday, and then all of a sudden, they don't come Monday, they come another day. Gets things messed up.
Sure.
So I don't know if we get everything we're supposed to get, I haven't seen, seen this stuff in years.
Okay.
So I don't know if we're getting what we're getting, and Pete is not a complainer.
Sure.
Well, he'll just make a couple comments once in a while, and he just deals with it, and whatever, so I don't know what we're getting.
Once we allegedly make solid at the transfer station, I'll probably just connect with you.
All that stuff might be tagged on with Woody's bill.
It could, it could.
Yeah, but they're, um, so then the other thing I found out just recently, uh, when I spoke with all of the employees about whether they wanted to do their own washing. We just decided that might not be a good idea.
Yeah.
But anyway, long story short is, uh, their shirts and stuff were coming back. Uh, the ones they sent in were fairly new and fairly clean, it's the same shirt, cuz it's tagged, it's your shirt coming back. But they might put them in with grease from somebody else, and come back with big black spots, or bleach spots on there, and they're like, I didn't send it back, there's bleach spots. They didn't splash any bleach in the dump, but they're not, like, they sent them in. And then now, I, I just know that our, our insurance went up because they posted a claim on it, cuz we were having too many shirts.
Yeah.
In their three-to-five-year time period, if your shirt or jacket wears out, and you are too many within that time period. They've increased that rate on us.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, you're ki- you're considered a severe or, or a heavy user of the material, so that actually.
Have to take a picture of your dirty shirt that you're sending.
Well, that's what's, that's what's weird about it, and so Woody, uh, they were supposed to have one increase, and Woody swears today and to Dana that they had two, and he's gonna get the slips out.
Yeah.
Woody does watch his stuff pretty close, probably a lot closer than I would, but he watches it. The other problem he has is, sometimes these guys don't turn in, like, so they get nine shirts, and they turn them four a week, or however it's split up, I think.
Supposedly four a week, yeah.
So, if they bring two that week, so he's trying to track what they're turning in, as well as what he's getting back. It's not an easy task when you're trying to do everything else down there, but.
Yeah.
Okay, Brent, put in two shirts instead of four, this guy, the guy's returning.
Oh, I, yeah.
My lip like the driver is shorting it.
They don't come the same day, it messes it up too.
Yeah, so it's a, but I'm sure Dana can.
I'm, I'm, I'm hot on the, I'm hot on the trail.
I know Woody's, Woody's put a lot of effort into this, forty years, talking to companies, and we've changed companies. And we weren't gonna change companies, but we seem, I guess there aren't many games in town.
The other one wasn't much better.
There aren't many games in town, and, and like I said, from the highway department, as far as I know, it's not horrible, but it's not perfect.
Yeah, okay. So that's, I, I, I do think that there's exceptions, if something comes back with a stain that you didn't send it out with. I think they're reasonable enough to consider it a, uh, what they'll call is a, a warehouse damage to it, and they don't charge you for that.
But they don't know until you get it back, right?
But clearly you don't know until it comes back.
So the guy has to get it and wear it, say, oh, this isn't what I bought it.
Yeah, it would have to be something, yeah.
So you're not gonna get grabbed to say that, probably. They told me once in a meeting.
I mean, if it looks that bad.
They will wear it, he's not wearing them right along, so.
Then you wouldn't complain about it? But they, somebody actually, was it Woody that actually?
Police officers would deal with it.
So, so, so was it Woody that said, oh, we need to like replace all of these shirts and, and jackets and pants? Because they have stains that we didn't generate?
Um, I don't know what they just did.
Yeah, so they did a replacement of a whole bunch of stuff?
Not to make this linger any longer, but if you're in negotiating anything, one thing is key to us is. They pick Pete's uniforms up at the highway garage and leave them at the highway garage.
Okay.
Cuz when, years ago, when they first started the uniform service, they were leaving them up at the transfer station. So the guy who worked at the town had to go to the transfer station, get his clothes, bring the clothes back, and that's a lot of running around.
Yeah, yeah.
For no good reason, so Woody was able to get him to do this, and it's worked out quite well.
Okay, good.
So that, that is.
We don't wanna lose that.
That's a plus, and I would really not like to lose that.
Yeah.
The only thing, there's a quick update, but you spoke to John?
Yes.
I think, if you can, try and put the homeless on them. Shouldn't be Woody's job that the guy has a transcript from his office and what he has on the truck doesn't match.
Yeah, I, I agree.
You know?
I agree.
Put the homeless back on them and say, John, why is my guy telling you guys what's on your truck?
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree with that.
You know, but it seems weird that Woody has to be the, the bad guy, when he's just trying to explain what's happening.
Well, it's funny, the guy, John, did say, the driver shouldn't notice if he's bringing back less than what was picked up the week before.
Right, and Woody's the one that's gonna tell him.
Okay, so maybe.
Does he go in there when the transfer station is not open?
No, it's always someone.
So then somebody should be able to receive the stuff.
Yes, there's always someone receiving it.
Hey.
Which is Woody, and he's saying, hey, you're short, two shirts and three jackets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if he's short, he's short.
Now, that's another thing that was kind of funny, the jackets that went back, they determined they lost them internally.
Uh, that's what I heard, yes.
And so now they're replacing the jackets, but it's gonna take two to three, four weeks, so our guys only have two. So when I told Woody, when I talked a week or so ago, or when we had that meeting, if you guys are running seven shirts or nine shirts, and you need twelve. To make it come back right again.
Yeah.
If you need three jackets instead of two, get a third.
Get a spare.
Let's not overthink it, you know?
Sure, if that's, if that's a.
I mean, we're talking four, five thousand dollars for the entire year for clothing for.
I don't know what it costs.
That's what it is, it's not much money.
Yeah.
If you look at his line and his budget, it's not big money.
Yeah, so it would, it would increase.
Woody, fifty dollars is a lot.
Yeah, it would increase by, you know, eighty-five cents a shirt per week or something like that.
If it solves the problem, so be it.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Well, it might not solve the problem though, right?
It doesn't.
Because, even if it's twelve, if you're not getting, we need the process to work properly in terms of what was sent.
Check-in and check-out, just to.
Yeah, you need to know that you're getting the same amount back that you sent in.
You're real, you're sure. I really love that you're here.
You're real.
All right, um, anything else, Dana?
No.
I'm good.
Halloween tomorrow, Dunbar, five to seven, common is gonna be truck or treat tomorrow, a lot of activity up here tomorrow night, be careful.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
That's all I got.
Are you attending?
No.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at nine oh two.
One second.
Mr. May in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.